Good evening and welcome to the Smyrna Town Council workshop for August to set our meeting for September. Thank you all for being here with us tonight. And before we move into our presentations, I'm going to ask Steve Sullivan to do our prayer. And Sierra, will you do our pledge? Good, okay. You'll stand with us.
Dear Lord, thank you for today. Thank you for another great day in the town of Smyrna. We ask, Lord, that you be with these proceedings, that everything here would be pleasing in your sight. We ask you continue to bless the employees and the citizens of Smyrna and watch over and take care of us in all that we do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Bless the nations, see the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Thanks, Steve. Sierra, you did great, even though you looked nervous when I first called your name. So tonight, we have two presentations. Our first presentation is by Smyrna Police Department Chief Jason Ervin. Jason.
Good evening. Stranded. Officer Smallwood voluntarily took upon himself to escort the subject to Uptown Suites and paid for the subject to stay there overnight in order to prevent the subject from having to sleep in his vehicle. You know, I've done this job for almost 30 years, and I can think very few times that an officer went this far to actually help someone out that was in a situation they couldn't really prevent. This person didn't have the money to stay somewhere and was sleeping in their vehicle in order to be able to have enough money to pay for the repairs of their vehicle and to leave and go back through where they were going traveling to. And for Officer Smallwood to take his own money and pay for someone to stay just goes to the heart and the character of what I think every police officer should have. And I admire him for doing that and doing the job with the honor and integrity and dignity that we all should have, not only as police, but just as people in general. And so I wanted to bring him here tonight. He works midnight shift, but I asked him if he could be here because I wanted to recognize him. I wanted to present him with a challenge coin and also a token of appreciation for what he did.
If you all like coming up here and doing that so Ms. Heather can get a photo for social media.
Also let him know he didn't have to stay.
Well, before you leave, though. That's right. But before you leave, I also would like to say thank you because not only did you do above and beyond, but you embodied what Smyrna is about. It's about neighbor helping neighbor, even when that neighbor doesn't live in our community. And hopefully, that person left here with a really good feeling about what our community is about. So we appreciate the job you do every day, and we just want to say thank you. Thank you.
So the other topic tonight is something I spoke to Mr. Santucci about. I was approached by the Murfreesboro Chief of Police, Mike Bowen, in regards to a study he wants to do for his department and asked for our participation in, as far as a feasibility study regarding consolidation of 911 services as a unified service for Rutherford County. I've talked to Chief Bowen about this. It was a budgetary item he put in his budget for this year, and he approached me, and I spoke to Mr. Santucci about it, about us participating in this study. The study would be done by Mission Critical Partners, which is the organization that does these type of studies for municipalities, cities, counties, to see if it's feasible for them to unify a 911 service for the entire area. So I brought it to Dave, and we spoke about it, and I wanted to present it to council tonight and see if it was something we wanted to move forward on.
So Dave and Jeff, kind of help me out here. If we decided to move forward with this, I'm assuming it would be an MOU that would be done by any of the municipalities or the county that wanted to participate in the study. Would that be correct?
Yes. The price will be broke down depending on how many choose to do so.
And there's obviously no action item tonight, but that MOU would need to come before you as there would be a cost implication to that at that point.
I think if we're looking at a study, I think, for me personally, I think it would be worth looking at. I know that there's been some incidences, especially with EMS and things like that, where having a centralized dispatch could have helped. So I'm in favor of it. Counsel, what about the, are you all okay with the study?
My thought on this is we'll never regret doing the study and having the information and making a decision, one way or the other, but we might regret not having that information and not doing the study. So it just makes sense to go through the process.
Just because we do a study doesn't mean that we have to follow through and centralize the dispatch. Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. We have some friends and partners here tonight with the Child Advocacy Center of Rutherford County. Our presentation tonight will, I'm going to read all the names, but I'm not sure who's actually going to be coming up each time. So Jennings Jones, Jeff Duke, Christina Moody, Jennifer Head, and Sharon DeBoer.
We have a couple more people, too.
Oh, and a couple more, too. Great. Well, I do want to say thank you for what you do. There's going to be a lot of people here in this audience that won't know what type of service you provide to children of our county and families. So I'm glad that you're here, and I'll let you take it away. Sharon?
Thank you. I have the pleasure tonight of having members of the Child Protective Investigative Team with me to talk about what we do to respond to child abuse, child sexual abuse, and drug endangered children cases in our community. And we're going to start with Department of Children's Services. Christina Moody and Jennifer Head are here.
So my name is Jennifer Head. This is Christina Moody. We are team coordinators with the Department of Children's Services. Between the two of us, I think we have well over 30 years of experience with the department, not to age ourselves or anything. Moody's been here a lot longer than me, though. So we are, we, one thing that we have been trying to push a lot with our people is to let them know that they are first responders as well. So the department is, the Child Protective Services is a first responder to child abuse cases. So anytime everybody in Tennessee is a mandated reporter, I hope everybody here knows that, but I'll say it again. So when any mandated reporter makes a report to the child abuse hotline, it gets filtered down to the appropriate county and assigned an appropriate priority response. Those cases can be anywhere from educational neglect, a child doesn't go into school, all the way to some pretty severe allegations like child deaths, again, near deaths, drug exposed children. Fentanyl, I know we all have heard about it, is pretty rough, especially when you see a child that has had the effects of fentanyl exposure. We deal with child sexual abuse and child physical abuse as well. So our workers go out and respond. We cannot do this job without our Sipit partners, which you see several of them behind us here. We work directly with law enforcement. We work directly with the Child Advocacy Center. All of our severe abuse cases go through the Child Advocacy Center. They provide us with what we call forensic interviews, and they'll talk a little bit more about that. But the purpose of the Child Advocacy Center, I'm going to say that wrong the whole time, is to provide that safe space for a child to be able to tell their story and to be able to talk without having, hopefully, to talk to so many different people. Before the CACs were involved, where children were being interviewed by DCS, by law enforcement, by attorneys, by teachers, just over and over. And doing this work, you learn, kids don't want to talk about it. They want to heal. Kids are resilient, and they can heal, but if you keep bringing it up to them, either their story's going to change or they're going to be done with you and don't want to do anything. So our CACs are pivotal in providing that much-needed service for our families. We also, at the end of our cases or towards the end of our cases, have what we call our Sipit meetings, our Child Protective Investigative Team meetings. We sit down once a month and discuss every severe abuse case that comes through Rutherford County. Part of that team is obviously DCS, but the CAC, law enforcement, all of our different jurisdictions, our juvenile courts, our mental health advocates, our Our Kids people as well, which do the forensic medical exams for children with, who are victims of sexual abuse. And we discuss all of these cases, and we, they make suggestions if we need to do something further, or if we're done and they want to prosecute, they can decide to prosecute at that time and what needs to happen from there. And that's when we decide how we're going to classify our case and what we're going to do going forward. So all of those things would not be possible without the CAC. Not only do they provide the support to our kiddos, they also provide it to our staff and our families. They help us out. They provide us with a place to kind of vent our frustration sometimes because unfortunately, this is a very stressful job, and our workers sometimes just need that safe space as well. So I don't think we could do this job without them at all, and they deserve everything that they can get and more. So is there anything else?
We are very blessed in Rutherford County to have outstanding law enforcement, and I have the pleasure of introducing Jeff Duke.
Council Mayor, I believe you all know me very well. I'm doing great. I just want to give you guys a few facts that we deal with.
So tell, for those that are watching on TV or in the audience that might not know you, tell us your position and what you do here for the town.
My name is Jeff Duke. I'm a detective lieutenant with the Smyrna Police Department. I have been here for 36 years. I handle, I look at every child abuse case that comes into the department and assign that case. We have 11 detectives, including supervisors. Of those 11, Detective Marcia Gossett, Detective Tony Harris strictly work child abuse and domestics. So if that tells you anything about what we are looking at, we have two detectives doing nothing but that. And we are fixing to add a third detective that will solely work child abuse and domestics. With the CAC, it helps us, they take, have taken over our job of interviewing the child and talking to the child. In previous years, I was, I was here before the CAC was here, and interviewing a child a couple of times, two or three times, a police officer or myself, didn't have the exact skills to interview that child. CAC has the skills. They have the place. I was taking them to a cold room where we interview suspects or just take a report. They have a place where it's home. They have a couch. They have a TV. They can color. They can play games while they are being talked to and while they're explaining what's going on with them. Also, it frees us up to do follow-ups on the suspects. We're allowed to watch the interview. The interviewer will come out, ask us questions. We can in turn ask them questions to do a follow-up with, and it allows us to get more details about the perpetrator, suspect. So when we do face them, we have more knowledge of what we need to talk to that suspect about. And I would say, coming from, coming from the time we didn't have them to now, they are a valuable asset to this department and this county.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I'm going to introduce the child advocacy staff that are going to speak. Jennifer Gamble. Who is Darnell now. I apologize, I got her name wrong. Evelyn. And from Smyrna is Elizabeth Benton.
Great. So my name is Elizabeth Benton. I am a forensic interviewer. I've been with the CAC for seven years, and I am a proud Smyrna resident. So a forensic interview is a legally defensible, child-led interview that can be admissible in court. So I have completed two forensic interviewing trainings that I use whenever I am doing my interviews. Those interviews, I am asking questions that no one ever wants to have to ask a child. And we don't want you to have to ask a child. That's what I am there for. And so I am trained to be able to do that in a child-friendly way, a non-leading way, so that those interviews can be used in the amazing prosecution that our county does in court. And so we see, we have spots to see 20 children a week, and sometimes we're doing that. Like we mentioned, we have the meeting that we have each month, and on that, I put that agenda together each month, and we average about 70 cases a month that we're talking about. And those are Rutherford County kids, Smyrna kids, that we are talking about and seeing if they're going to be prosecuted, if the case is going to be substantiated, and what services need to be put into that home for that child.
Hi there. I'm Jennifer Darnell. I'm a social worker at the Child Advocacy Center. I've been there for 20 years next month. I love my job. While Elizabeth is with the child, I'm actually with their parents, finding out, do they know what's happened? Are they protective? Explaining the importance of counseling and forensic medicals for children, and just being that extra support for the family that, you know, the police and DCS, they don't have time to do that. That's my job, is to be supportive, do crisis counseling and follow-up. So that is my job. And this is Evelyn. She works with us. She is bilingual, and so she does my job in Spanish, and I'll let her talk about that.
So my name's Evelyn Gillian. I am the bilingual family advocate and forensic interviewer. So a little bit as what Jenny had mentioned, I do hers the same job. And another thing that I would like to mention is that we are another set of eyes for DCS and detectives when we are there with the families to ensure that the parents or caregivers are being protective of the children. If they're not, of course, that is very concerning, so we do go ahead and provide that information to them. Bilingual Spanish portion of it, most of our families don't understand why they're coming in, mainly because of that language barrier. So unfortunately, we have to be the ones to break that news to them as to why they are coming in. But we are also there for them to support emotional support and even counseling services or any type of service. All of our services are free, and we don't have a deadline. So if down the road, they want to call us again for further services, we are more than welcome to provide that. For the forensic interview aspect, of course, I'll do Spanish interviews for the DCS and law enforcement. I will take a little bit more breaks just to go into the room and translate and interpret for them if needed, and also going in and doing those home visits with them so information can be clear on both sides. But yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would put our Child Protective Investigative Team up against any team in the state. They do an outstanding job every day. And the one, the organization that I think does incredible work is the District Attorney's Office. We are very blessed in Rutherford County that, to have a District Attorney's Office that has two designated prosecutors, that all they do is prosecute child abuse and child sexual abuse cases. And I have the pleasure of introducing Jennings Jones.
How are you, Jennings?
Doing well, Mayor.
Great.
Mayor, council members, my name is Jennings Jones. I am the District Attorney for Rutherford County. Everything that the folks who have come before me have said is true, especially what Sharon just said about my office. I wanted to emphasize that. That was a joke. You don't have to laugh.
But true.
Well, you're kind to say so. Cases for my office, child abuse, physical abuse, sexual abuse cases come first from DCS and law enforcement, then they come through the Child Advocacy Center. And the Child Advocacy Center performs a function that Jeff was talking about that is incredibly complex. It's a difficult function. Interviewing a child, it's not as easy. A child is, sometimes if you are not careful, can be led by the interviewer. The interviewer, when talking to an adult, will ask questions designed to elicit an answer. Those same questions asked of a child might form the child's answer. So the forensic interviewers perform a function. Their interviews allow the child to lead the interview, and based on their certification, based on their training, and based on certain other requirements under the law, those interviews can be introduced for the prosecution in its case in chief so that the child doesn't have to take the stand to go through their. For a child to do, when that child has to sit on a witness stand in front of a jury facing the person who has done this to them, it's very difficult for that child to do. So I guess what I'm trying to impart is that the interviews performed by the CAC are an absolutely essential piece of what my office uses to prosecute. As Sharon said, we have two dedicated Assistant District Attorneys for child physical and sexual abuse. They stay constantly busy. The two of them try more cases than anyone else in my office. The number of cases that they are trying has done nothing but grown. The services that the CAC provides. And able to provide those services, those services would have to be provided by each department, each law enforcement department within the jurisdiction. Each law enforcement department would have to find a way to get a interviewer certified to maintain that certification, and that's an expensive proposition. So rather than having an interviewer in each agency, the CAC allows the law enforcement agencies of the jurisdiction to get together and provide for the entirety of the jurisdiction interviewers who can perform that function and thus save each agency in each city and the county a great deal of funding that would be duplicated across each agency. So my office cannot do its job without the CAC, cannot effectively do its job. It would eventually be able to do its job after a period of time within which each agency would have to obtain their own interview. The CAC is a 501(c)(3) charitable organization. It is mandated by the state to exist and to perform its function, and it receives some degree of funding from the state. Not enough funding from the state in order to have its full budget, operating budget, be funded. But what it does not receive, the CAC receives no funding from the state for a new. Upon each jurisdiction or each agency, each city and each council in the jurisdiction to provide us a little bit of funding in order for the CAC to move forward and specifically to build a new facility. As you're all aware, we've grown. We've grown tremendously. The need for the CAC has grown with it, and we need a new building. We need a new building to house the necessary people in order to do all of the interviews that are required. So I appreciate your time and attention. I hope from my heart that we have reached your hearts and we can convince you to help us out a little bit. Bye.
Thank you. And now I have the pleasure of introducing Kristen Demus, who is a local business owner and the co-chair of our capital campaign at the Child Advocacy Center.
If you didn't know this about Kristen, Kristen can also haul boxes and unload trucks. We were doing a little unloading today, and she happened to be at the space we were, and she just pitched right in and helped unload the truck. So I appreciate your help. It made my job much easier.
Absolutely. Thank you. My name is Kristen Demus, and I am a community volunteer. And first and foremost, I want to thank the Sipit team, the staff members at the CAC, the ladies and gentlemen that actually do the really hard work for our community. The thing about nonprofits, they don't pay very much. This staff has been here for years. Some of them have been here for 10-plus years. Sharon DeBoer has served for Rutherford County, which is a testament to how much they care and love the children in our community and want to provide protection for them. So thank you for the jobs that you do, day in and day out. It's a very difficult job. And thank you to the town of Smyrna for the support that they've given the CAC. We are so appreciative of all that you've done to support. You've been a community supporter and community friend for the CAC, and we are so appreciative of that. We are here today for an ask because the current space that the CAC is housed in is approximately 1,800 square feet. They have 13 staff members that cannot all work in the building at the same time. They have two trained forensic investigators. They have one room that they can conduct forensic investigative. That represents a difficulty in scheduling the families that have to be scheduled for their forensic interviews. When they need to come in means a child is going home to a potentially dangerous situation. And I know that none of us here wants to see that. And so that is why we have a desperate and dire need for a larger space. Earlier this year, maybe into 2024, the CAC conducted a feasibility study, and they interviewed key team players across the communities across Rutherford County. And everyone is in agreement that the CAC does need a new space. One of the caveats that they, that they had that we listened to wholeheartedly is instead of building, a brand-new building from the ground up, they encouraged us to look for a space that was existing that we could go in and renovate for several reasons. One, we could get in there sooner. Also, it would reduce the cost dramatically. We have listened to that, and we have got some very good leads. We've been actively searching for a building, and we, we think that we've got a space that would definitely fit, and we're in conversation about that right now with the owner. What that does is drastically reduce the cost that we were originally looking at for building the space. 1,800 square feet is not enough to house the Sipit team to do their work. It's not enough to house, you know, they're having to schedule one family at a time. There's also confidentiality that has to be maintained. And so a lot of times, the families have to wait in their car to be able to even get into the building so that they don't compromise the confidentiality of another family that's in the space. Also, there's an organization called Our Kids, and what they do is they conduct the physical forensic exams. They would like to partner with us and take a space in our building, which would be a fantastic solution for Rutherford County. What that does is that removes an obstacle from families having to drive, currently they'll have to drive to Nashville, to, with a child that is going to have to face a forensic physical exam. As you can imagine, that's very scary. To be able to have everything in one home in a safe place that is warm, and as they talked about earlier, it's a warm environment. They're stuffed animals. They've got coloring books. They do everything to make the child feel safe and secure within the space. And so Our Kids would also be in that home with us. And so our ask is that you all consider to help us build, renovate a new space. We are hoping to add at least 7,000 to 8,000 square feet in the new space, and that would accommodate at least two forensic interview rooms, also accommodate space for the Sipit team to work, for the entire team to be able to work in office together as they should be able to, and then, of course, also have a space for Our Kids to join us. Thank you so much, and I'm available if you have any questions, but thank you so much.
So question, how much are you all trying to raise in total?
Our current budget is set at $7 million. We are, you know, obviously trying to be good stewards of that, so if we are able, we're looking to reduce that budget in any way we can, and so hopefully, we'll find a building that is a lower cost.
Have any of the other governmental entities pledged money at this point?
Yes. Rutherford County has pledged $1 million that they have put aside for, on behalf of the CAC, and we are to go back to them once we have gotten other money raised, which we are very proud that we have brought on some private partnerships already and gotten pledges. So we will be going back to the Rutherford County government for the end of the fiscal year.
Were they going to just do that in one lump sum, or were they going to spread that out over a couple of years?
One lump sum.
One lump sum. I'm assuming you would accept money over multiple years?
Absolutely.
Okay. Have you, in your collect, in raising money, and you may not want to tell how much you've raised up to this point, have you been pretty successful with the general public yet?
Are you comfortable saying? As of right now, we've got pledges to the tune of $1.7 million, and we haven't formally announced the campaign yet.
Okay. Okay. And if the public wants to donate, if there's somebody that's listened tonight.
Go on our website.
Okay.
cacrutherford.org.
cacrutherford.org. Okay. Great. Counsel, questions?
Not a question, but you know, as Senator, listen to you and, you know, Jeff, Jeff, I've known Jeff a lot longer than you all have. There are stories, Jennings, I'm not going to talk about that. But just to hear the word "child" and then fill in the blank, child sex abuse, child rape, whatever the term is, it's heartbreaking to hear that children are living in a society today that they have to deal with that kind of behavior, primarily from adults. To hear Jeff talk about having two detectives and needing a third one, that's heartbreaking to know that you need that many people to try to solve these many issues. Each one of you got to come up here tonight and have your name mentioned, and believe me, the public watches this. I'm glad that all of you got to come up here and publicly got to be recognized tonight to our community so that people understand the importance of what you all do. So, thank you for what you do. I know it's a big task. It's a big job. I can't imagine what you deal with. None of us probably can. But thank you for the effort and the depth in which you dive into these cases and have to solve them. I really appreciate it.
And thank you for the support that the town of Smyrna has given us for the last 25 years. Y'all have been incredibly supportive. Jeff used to work our cases 25 years ago when we started.
So, what geographical areas, I'm reading here, do you also serve Cannon County?
Yes, we also serve Cannon County, and we have a facility in Cannon County that's donated that we work out of there.
Okay. And the, and I don't need the exact address, but with the facility you're looking at, is it in Murfreesboro?
Yes, it's in Murfreesboro. 51% of our cases are coming from Murfreesboro. So, that's what we looked at when we tried to figure out where we were going to put the location.
Okay. Thank you.
Ideally close to the police station so that we can keep everything centralized.
Other questions?
So, you said that the Rutherford County had pledged an amount. Have the other municipalities also pledged or not yet?
Not yet, but we're planning to.
You are the first council that we have gotten to do a presentation with, and so, thank you for leading the charge on that.
And thank you for all that you've done.
And we have a tour that's going to happen on Tuesday, the Tuesday after Labor Day, with Dave, your wonderful town manager. And if any of you would like to come tour our facility, we would love to have you. It'll be at 8:00 a.m. on the Tuesday after Labor Day, and we're going to, you know, talk about what we do again, but we're also going to show you our physical location.
Other questions?
I wish you didn't have to come present to us. I wish this was a facility we did not have to have in Rutherford County. Unfortunately, it is, and we can't thank you enough for the job you do, day in and day out. We appreciate you. We will have some internal discussion with staff and with the police department, and hopefully, we'll be getting back with you guys.
And if you have additional questions, don't hesitate to ask. We're very transparent.
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you so much for the time.
You all are welcome to stay for the meeting if you want, but you don't have to if you choose not to. So, I will leave that up to you.
This is your cue to get up.
Don't knock each other over, leaving out the door.
Except Jeff. Jeff.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
No public comments.
No public comments tonight. Okay. Item one is consideration and approval of the new and revised Smyrna Police Department Policies, Unmanned Aircraft Systems, Drones Policy Number 2-59, Appearance Uniform and Equipment Policy Number 3-7, and Procedures for Handling the Mentally Ill Policy Number 2-32. Chief?
All right, Council. The straight policies tonight, as we go through our accreditation process, we're trying to make some revisions and add some things. The first one is the unmanned aircraft systems, drones. We really didn't have a coherent policy before, so I got Jason Anderson to work on this one and pull some other model policies to get this in place. It's a standard policy that addresses the FAA requirements for drone usage, which is, are pretty strict. So, we wanted to make sure we had a good, solid policy in place as we move forward. Right now, we have three drones, but I would like to, of course, expand that program into the future. So, we needed a very good policy to follow as far as we implement that further in the future. The second policy is in regards to appearance and uniform. Officers, a lot of times, do carry knives for situations where, one of the main situations is if they come upon a car accident or a traffic crash, and they have to cut a person out of the vehicle for the seat belt. There's other situations like that where officer has to utilize a knife to solve an issue or solve a problem. We want to make sure we had a clear policy to address how those knives are carried, where they're carried on the uniform, and also the use of those knives, that the knives are not used for self-defense necessarily. They're not used to, as far as a use of force issue, other than exit circumstances of an officer is in a situation where he's about to lose his life or die, that or any other object possibly could be used in order to save him or her. Other policy is in regard to procedures for handling the mentally ill. A revision on this policy come forward, I had a meeting with several people from emergency services due to issues we had with parties being transported by ambulance to the hospital. Previously, our policy stated that the ambulance service would transport these parties, if there's someone in a mental health crisis, transport them to the hospital for evaluation. After having a meeting with the ambulance personnel, they did advise us their policy was pretty strict, that they only transported individuals for medical purposes. So, in order to make sure we're in compliance with them and working well with them, we changed our policy to make sure that if there is someone suffering from a mental crisis or a mental health issue, we transport those parties to be evaluated unless that person has injured themselves or it's a medical issue, then the ambulance would take over at that point.
Questions for Chief? Okay. Seeing none, we'll put that on the agenda. Move on to item two, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Sessions Paving Company for the Sam Ridley Parkway intersection at Old Nashville Highway.
I'm Mayor and Council. This contract is for, like you said, the Sam Ridley at Old Nashville Highway. This contract will be with Sessions Paving for an amount of $3,988,000. This is through TDOT Local Programs, which we do have a grant with them. This project will add double left-hand turn lanes, two through lanes, and right turn lanes on all four legs of the intersection. It'll look much like Stonecrest Industrial Boulevard at Sam Ridley. And it will also solve the drainage issue that we currently have in the one quadrant of the intersection.
Okay. Questions about this much-needed project?
What's the timeline?
It's on or before December 31st of '26.
You said a date.
How much is the grant that we're receiving?
Currently, we have a $2 million grant. It's a carbon reduction program, CMAC, so that's what we have now. I did put this in the statewide partnership program for 2025 to try to get additional because when it first came up, it was estimated at $2 million, but after 2020, prices doubled. So, we will be trying to go back and increase that grant fund.
So, will our costs be right at $4 million, or will it be less the grant amount?
Hopefully, we're down at the 20% range. Right now, we're probably on the construction where a million, that's local funding. All the other 3 million is 80/20.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay. Item three, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute Amendment Number Two with Energy Land and Infrastructure LLC for professional services for Phase Two design of the weekly lane improvement projects.
Yes, Mayor, this is the next phase. This phase is for Eighth Avenue to Lakeside. Phase one was from Swan to Eighth. Kind of give you a brief background on this. The survey functional plans from Swan to the Town Limits was completed in August of '24. We started design phase one in September of '24, and we've also added the EMS station that has just come on. We have already included that in our design plans, and we're still waiting for the traffic impact study to come back for the National Guard to see if we're going to do any other improvements at Ninth Avenue.
You said EMS. You mean the forensic center?
Yes. But it will come directly out on Swan. It'll be right across from Mitchell Drive there, so it will make a nice four-leg intersection there. But the forensic center, it comes off Ninth and I Street.
Will there be a Phase Three of this?
Yeah, the Phase Three will run from Lakeside all the way out to the Town Limits. Hopefully, we'll be going to construction in the spring of next year for Phase One, so we're getting Phase Two ready. So, hopefully, we can keep those on about a year's cycle to get Phase Two design done, and it'll be ready when Phase One construction is nearing completion to try to keep coherent phasing and construction through the project.
Yeah. We heard, Dave, you may know this, Charles, you may, what's the timing on the forensic center completion?
Seven.
So, the road should be, at least that portion up to Eighth should be done prior to the forensic center.
Right. So, hopefully, like I said, and as soon as we get more with the guard study, which the only place that really would impact this would be Ninth Avenue, because that would be the other main entrance from the north and from the east, from the west on that.
Charles, what will the cross-section look like?
The first phase is premise going to be a three-lane curving gutter section. It will not be a continuous third lane. It will have left turns drawn out for each one. Once we get past Eighth Avenue, it will go down to just turn lanes at the large industrial entrances. And then, once we get past Lakeside, we'll go down to just adding two-to-four-foot wide shoulders out to the Town Limits.
And no sidewalks since we have the walking trail.
Well, we have the Greenway, so we will hook sidewalks from Wary Housing down near Eighth Avenue and Ninth, right there where it makes the turn. We will put in a crosswalk there, a cross-weekly, to connect that community to the Greenway, which gets them on into the airport area. And we'll also have the one that's currently there at Eighth Avenue that crosses the Greenway.
With some improved pedestrians.
Right. We'll either put in the rectangular flashing beacons of some sort of safety to really enhance, because we do have a large pedestrian usage from Wary Housing over to the airport area.
So, will it kind of match up to what the county did earlier when it gets out that far?
Right. County has taken theirs out to the two-foot paved shoulder, so we will match into that.
Okay. Item four is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to approve the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Annual Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, the town of Smyrna operates under an NPDES permit since we are MS4. It's a separate sewer and water, separate sewer and stormwater system. And every year, we have put together an annual report of work we've done for the last year to cover our six minimum control measures. Those include public education outreach like Boat Day, public participation, working with contractors, developers, engineers on stormwater issues, illicit discharge detection elimination, management of construction site runoff, management of post-construction site runoff, and good housekeeping and municipal operations. So, this annual report was approved by the Stormwater Advisor Committee and asking for you all approval so we can submit that to TDEC.
Questions on this annual report?
Yeah. Mainly on the, I know we've had some developments, Tom, that we've had some, I guess, erosion leaving the site and everything. Are those instances included in this report that we submit to TDEC?
Yeah, they're listed under active construction sites. If it's an active construction site like that, then yeah, they're listed on that.
Then while I got Tom up here, and I've talked to Dave about this, I've had a couple people reach out to me. They're now having to inspect, have a professional inspect their detention basin, and I wanted to make sure that we explained, I think, used to, we used to inspect them and then send that in to TDEC, but now that's kind of shifted to the property owners, if I'm understanding that.
Not exactly. So, we still perform annual inspections. Our inspectors go out every year to do that, but then in every fifth year.
Right.
They have to, the permittee is required under TDEC. It's under Section 4.2.5.7. They're required to perform an inspection every five years by the permittee, and they can hire someone to do that. And there's a list of people who perform those activities. We give that out to people to let them know that they can contact a professional to do that for them.
So, if they find something during the inspection, how does that process go? That report gets sent back to your department, and then we follow up. Your department follows up on that work being done, like sediment removed or?
Yeah. If it's sediment removal, if it's a broken asphalt structure, sinkhole, we've had that open up in some storm ponds, and we'll go out and just make sure that those things are corrected.
Okay.
And there's a checklist that goes out that has to be returned to the town. So, could you just send us that checklist?
Yes.
So that we, and that way, we can see what the citizens that are having in that five-year period, and that way, and then if it comes back.
I had two people reach out, and I think one of them with the inspection, and I guess the sediment removal, had a quote of $4,500. And so, their question was, okay, we're paying the stormwater fee, but now we're having to inspect their facility, and we're having to correct it as well. So, I just want to be able to answer them that this is sort of a mandate by TDEC and not us specifically requiring.
No, we're required to do that, and that was approved in the revisions of the stormwater ordinance. We have to incorporate that. I talked to a few of these companies that do the stormwater inspections. They charge anywhere from $150 to $600 to come out and inspect a site. And then, if there's anything above that, if they find something like sediment removal needs to be removed, then yeah, certainly, that can, those costs will be incurred. But these are stormwater management systems that are on private property for private developers. They're not publicly owned. They're not in the right-of-way or anything like that, so they are the requirement of the land.
They're not HOA-driven in any way, are they?
I'm sorry.
They're not HOA-driven in any way for recourse, for payment, or whatever?
I didn't understand your question.
Well, if it's a subdivision or a development, would an HOA have any responsibility there to help with that or charge for that, or is it done individually?
So, if it's in an HOA, if it's in a community like that, then the HOA would be responsible. Wherever their management company is, they would be responsible for making sure those repairs.
But this is only going out to commercial and HOAs?
Yes.
Is what it's going out to?
Yes.
It's not? Okay. But the one good, Jerome, I think you brought up a good point. I mean, if there is something that's not right and somebody is having to pay money, it's because it's not working correctly. And so, that, hopefully, that's going to help with that issue. So, okay.
Jerome, the people that contacted you, were they individuals, or they represent HOA?
No, individuals. There was a church, and I don't care, St. Luke Church was one, and Luke Hoochie's Classic Automotives on Lowry almost across from Omni-Hud. He's got underground detention, and he got that letter. We have lunch every Friday, and then he got a quote from one of the guys on the list, and he wanted me to guess how much it's going to cost. And I said, I'm afraid to. It was $4,500 to have it inspected and the sediment cleaned out. So.
So, it wasn't the inspection that was $4,400. It was the clean out?
It was the total, the total amount. Yeah.
Okay. Well, we will put that on the agenda, and we'll move on to item five, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract addendum with Energy Land and Infrastructure LLC for the design of the sidewalks along Rock Springs Road from Mason Tucker to Old Nashville Highway.
So, this is the second phase of Rock Springs Road sidewalks. It's going to be, like you mentioned, sidewalks along Rock Springs Road from Mason Tucker to Old Nashville Highway, trying to create that loop of a sidewalk system around Smyrna. And in the course of the design of the project, they had discovered that some of the water mains and gas mains were in the way of where we need to install some stormwater inlet structures, so they had to do some additional work to identify where those locations were, additional survey. survey and to know exactly where the water main is, and then to do some engineering to work around that water main. It's a larger water main, we don't want to move it, and we certainly don't want to move the gas main, so that was what the additional services are for.
Questions on the additional services? Okay, we'll move on to items.
Would you like to go through acquisition, right-of-way acquisition, all that after the S.R.?
There are some places where we'll have to get construction easements, but for the most part, it's all going to be in existing right-of-way.
Okay, item six is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Civil and Environmental Consultants Incorporated to perform stream monitoring.
So again, under our NPDS permit, every five years, we have to do a stream monitoring study. And we selected CEC. They've done several of these before for other municipalities, and they gave us a good price to do that work. Basically, they'll go out and collect water samples in some of our waterways, Olive Branch, Hart's Branch, Rock Springs Branch, and Stewart Creek. And they'll be analyzing that water for siltation, nutrients, and other pathogens. We'll submit that information to TDEC for, to maintain our NPDS permit.
Questions on this?
Does this also identify any illicit dischargers into the creek or, you know, like cow falls that we didn't know that were there?
I don't believe, it doesn't specifically identify any illicit discharges, and it just identifies what the water quality is based on certain water parameters at that time.
So if they find something that requires further investigation?
Not really. What it does is it puts it on the list, and most of those streams are on the list. I think Rock Springs Branch is the only one that's not on the list for siltation. The others are on the list for either siltation or other parameters, so that may require some additional erosion protection or additional buffer on places that discharge to those bodies of water to make sure that they are less impacted during development.
Do they do that every, you know, 1,000 feet, every 2,500 feet, you know, down that stream to?
I'm not sure what the spacing is. I'm not sure what the spacing is. I know that they do it as waters come into Smyrna, and they do, they monitor it as it exits Smyrna, but as far as like, and I believe at confluences, they measure there as well, but as far as spacing, I'm not sure.
Okay, item, oh, sorry.
Question about the line item budget amount. So we're coming in way under budget now based on what this estimated cost is? Or that is the cost, the $170?
For number six, or?
Yes. You said it was approved for $170, but you found someone to do it for less? Or is that their cost, the $170?
So for this one, yeah, their cost is, I think, $32,700. So, you know, I think we had budgeted $40,000 for that item, and so it came in less than what we had budgeted for.
Okay. Sorry, I was forgetting. Okay.
You thought $170?
Guess what I'm, am I reading that wrong? Or is that not the right number? Am I looking?
That's what it says.
Item number six, says $170.
Fiscal, on our, on our main sheet, it says that funding is provided under Stormwater Department's line item budget for contractual at $170.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I understand now the question, but yeah, that's our budget for all of contractual and stormwater. So it includes several other things, but yeah, that's a component of it. I'm sorry, I understand.
I was like, that was quite a deal.
Yeah, just some finagling, and save it as $140,000, just wink, wink.
Okay. All right. Okay, item seven is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Raindrop Products LLC for improvements to the Splash Town water slides. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, this is an item that's in our capital improvement budget for Parks and Recreation. We've coordinated the proposal through Raindrop Products, through the Sourcewell Purchasing Co-op, and Raindrop's going to work with a company called Safe Slide Restoration to complete the work. I don't know if you looked in your packet to see the pictures, but you can see some of the fading, mainly on the western side and between the chemicals and the sun out there. It's pretty tough on those, those slides, really everything out there. So we want to get those repaired. The project cost is $49,514.85, and the goal is to do this in between seasons. We'd like to start this fall if we can, because spring is so tough to do anything paint-wise, paving, anything like that. Again, it is in our capital improvement budget for this year.
Okay. Item eight is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Kimberly Horn to update the five-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Yes, ma'am. This is another item that is in our capital improvement plan or budget. And basically, Kimberly Horn has worked with us several times. They've done, they did the last Parks Master Plan, they did the Black Pet and Major Thoroughfare Plan recently, which we finished this past fiscal year. To stay current for grants, especially LPRF grants and things of that nature, they have to be updated every five years. Next summer will be five years since we've updated that. The grant round comes out pretty soon, and then will probably have to be done by April if we desire to submit for LPRF grant anywhere. But also, they've done a good job. They'll attend a meeting or two with Parks Board and stakeholders and that type of thing. And I've asked them if they would attend some of our community events where they can get a survey and some comments from the public. Hopefully, Halloween the park, if we get this ready in time. And then, they'll have some surveys that go out like they did last time as well. So the cost of that project is, actually, it's $37,200. I saw that, I did a misprint there, but when I look back through the contract, it's $37,200.
I do have one question. The agreement in our packet still has quite a bit of strike-throughs in it, and there's no tracking, so I don't know whether it's the fully agreed-to agreement or not. So can we get a clean version before the meeting?
Is it, is it the addendum?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's something we, the last couple of times we've used them, that was some things that was not pertinent. We can clean that up.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I don't know whether it's signed by them but not us, so I don't know if it's been agreed to by us or just submitted as red lines from them, and we haven't reviewed them. I don't know where it's at. So just send us a clean version, or include a clean version.
We'll clean your, clean version. I sent it through Ben.
Yeah, it's fine, as long as it's in the packet for the meeting, I'm fine. I think I can make sense of it. I was just couldn't tell who was striking at what.
Yes, yeah, we'll get that, but we'll sign it. It has been run through legal, that addendum, and we'll, I always ask them to have it signed for this, and we'll sign it afterward. We'll definitely clean that up. I didn't realize that that's what y'all saw.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item nine is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Boozer and Associates for easement appraisals for the Highland Avenue Phase One Water Model Project.
Hello. So we have already, as you guys know, bid out and approved the contractor for this project. Come to find out, we have four easements down towards the end where we need to tie in that we need to get. We have talked to the contractor, and they are willing to wait while we get these easements. And Boozer will do the work on the easements, and then we'll get the negotiator, which has already been approved, to get these, and we'll roll on with the project.
Questions for Mike? Okay. Item 10 is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with the Jones Fortuna LP for the water storage reallocation study.
So when we did the capacity study with SSR, they did talk to the Corps about, you know, potential for additional water. The Corps had stated there was other entities in Rutherford County that wanted to do the same thing, and they would, they asked that we kind of form a group, if you will, for lack of a better term, and approach this as a group. Us, CUD, Murphysboro, and my understanding is now Laverne's joined the party. So there will be an amended agreement, a little bit different than the one you see here, because Laverne has come on board. As far as the cost, we would pay 20%. So this is real difficult to determine. Louis Jones with Jones and Fortuna is going to send out, and I may have it in my email, I was out of the office today, an estimated, and estimated is a rough estimated cost that I will be providing to Dave and you guys. I don't know if it got sent today, because I wasn't here today, but I will look, and as soon as, as soon as he sends that, it will be the cost for his legal services to conduct the study for the group. They would represent the group as a whole and each individual entity. As far as the study goes, there will be a cost for the study, and I'm not sure if reimbursable, I wrote that reimbursable is the right way to put it. So when the Corps goes into a new fiscal year, if they appropriate funds for a study, whatever we've put in would stop, and they would take over at that point. I know it's kind of confusing, but we're not to, I think the Corps' fiscal year is October or November. It's not the same as ours. So we don't know, and we, I think they have had an initial conversation with the Corps. I will know more information as we, as we move forward, but we're very new into this, so I apologize for the limited information, but I should get you some estimates at the very least on what's going on, so.
Okay, questions for Mike?
Yeah, this doesn't deal with what we put back in, does it? With return flows? Right. It does not. Well, I say it does not. This is about additional capacity. Return flows are part of that whole storage analysis agreement that they do, so that's included, but that changes as we put more back in from the plant. This is actually just about water capacity.
So you'll, you'll know a little bit better probably before the voting meeting of the numbers?
As I said, I may have an email in my inbox now that I can share with Dave, and then we can send it out to you guys and kind of give you, you know, what they're estimating.
Right.
I did talk to Louis about that, and several others have asked for this same estimate. It is very difficult, because remember, the last time we did this, it took about two-and-a-half years. So, I mean, you could be looking two-and-a-half or three years before this is completed. This isn't a quick, a quick process to go through, so.
Okay. Item 11 is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Tyler Technologies Incorporated for case management software for the probation department.
Standing in for Ms. Collier or Mrs., whatever, she's on her honeymoon today.
Very nice.
So it's my understanding that the probation department and the Court Clerk's Office use separate software, so they didn't talk. It created a big problem, so we're asking, or the probation department's asking, that they obtain the same software so that it's streamlined. I helped negotiate with the legalese of it. Carl helped out tremendously with the technical stuff on the software and kind of pared it back from some stuff we didn't need because of the size of the probation department. And it's my understanding was their, their contract was about 75 grand, and it was pared back to, I think, 49 and change.
This might be a question you can't answer. Does our probation software talk to the county's probation software so we can see if they're?
Short answer is I do not know. I don't think so, but I'm hesitant to give you bad information.
Okay.
But I know it doesn't talk to our Court Clerk's Office, so it, you know, it's not very efficient.
I can help them out a little bit.
Okay.
We have access to that system. It's not necessarily a co-join system, so to speak, but we have access to it, and they can communicate back with the two different systems that they have. This just allows, the current software doesn't allow them to do anything other than track people. We can't attach cases to it. For instance, we have to keep paper, and so every case that comes through court and we're signing probation, they have to have manila folders. We can't attach documentation to the cases. So what this allows us with Tyler, we have a storage system where we can almost go paperless, and then real-time assessing, assessing of charges can go over to the clerk's office where they can be paid and collect the fees and stuff. So it speeds it up quite a bit, plus, again, they have files and files and files that we're going to eliminate with our current system. We can't store anything on those documents.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item 12 is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Placer Labs Incorporated to utilize their analytics platform solution.
Mayor, Council, this is for a platform called Placer AI, and we're, the base of it is we're going to use it for event analytics. One of the many things that this platform will do for us is we will be able to geofence some of our events, and we'll be able to determine the amount of people that frequent these events. Well, while that becomes important, we can also calculate what the potential economic impact of these events would be. On top of this program, we also have a program with the water department where we can analyze and look at water usage rates based off foot traffic and people that do, come to these different businesses and different types of businesses. There's many, many uses. The one that I'm most excited about is there's a housing study growth that we allow us to do. And so if we have projects that come in, we're able to tag on to our infill services project that we're currently doing about our urban growth boundary, but we'll be able to, be able to come with the council and tell them what the cost of the growth is going to be, growth is going to be to the county, but also what the potential impact will be financially, economically rather, from the housing projects that we will have.
Okay.
This assumes everybody has a cell phone, correct?
Pardon?
This assumes everybody has a cell phone, correct?
It assumes that you have an app. It doesn't necessarily mean a cell phone. If you have a tablet, you have an iPad, it's, the data is collected from your user usage that you have when you download an app, and people can opt out of it. It's not that, it's a requirement. It's, it's one of those mobile, mobile advertising protocols that you have on most of your apps. So if you get an app and you basically check out of it for security, well, it's not that. And the information, this company gets the information that's already been stripped out of any personal information, so we're not collecting the data. The company we're working with is not collecting the personal data. It's stripped out before that data is even in this process so that we can do a report for it.
So the analytics on events, is it just town sponsored events that we're looking to gain analytics on, or is it just events in the town?
Events is just really a small portion of it. And when I say small portion, it's one of the major portions of it for, and we demoed it a little bit for, with some of the parks projects. For instance, if we have a...
Say Depot Days.
Say Depot Days, yes, sir. We can do Depot Days, we can do barbecue, barbecue fest. We can even look at similar areas like Sewer's Landing, that project that's coming forth. If we can look at the Proxim Square footage, we can find a matching, matching facility, and we can see what the potential economic impact will be for that, whether it be housing, whether it be commercial properties. And it's, it's just an extra tool for us to be able to come to the council and give you a more data-driven decision, so to speak. We can tell you what the costs are, we can tell you what the cost may be, but we also need to look at what the economic impact would be for whatever project, whatever event and what have. And also for Ms. Kent, for instance, for our Top Gun, Top Gun Night Run, you'd be kind of surprised at how many people travel from other locations to come running the event. It offers her an opportunity that she can focus some of our social media in that area. An interesting one that we did is we did the event center, and we were, we were kind of surprised with some of the information. We had a huge heat map from Telahoma and one from Knoxville. You know, so I'm looking at it thinking, we've got a lot of people from Knoxville and Telahoma coming to the event center. Actually, we do. Telahoma's or Ascend, and Ascend has a lot of their events at the event center. Also, with Knoxville, we have TBA that have several hiring events and stuff at the event center. So we're able to take that data, and as you can see, I've told you, different, different departments that we can use it in, but we can give a, make a better data-driven decision that we can have, especially with growth and the cost, and that's what we're excited about on this, this platform.
Dave and I demoed this in, at ICSC and played with it there a little bit. Some, a lot of, everything he's saying is absolutely accurate, but there's some things that we played with, like you could pick any address. So we could pick like Academy Sports, and it would tell us how many people at a point in time were there and where those folks traveled from. Were they Smyrna residents? Were they Antioch residents? Did they come from their home? Did they come from other businesses? So you can even see the correlations if, let's say you have an event at Lee Victory, did they go to restaurants and gas stations before or after they left? You can get that kind of detail to see, is this event actually generating economic traffic, or is it just? generating economic traffic, or is it just in and out? The one thing I thought was very interesting is you can look at events and determine where they came from or where they went. So you could look at like Halloween in the Park and see how many of those type events are really Smyrna residents. How many are coming from outside the Smyrna area? And is the, is the benefit of the program or the project we're doing worth the effort if it's not for Smyrna residents? That, that kind of thing. Most of our athletic leagues, and Mike can tell you this, but most of us have been collecting zip code information on all of our participants for years, because we want to have an idea of how many Smyrna citizens are actually partaking in these leagues and these athletic capabilities. We don't have to do that anymore with this app. This app will be able to pick Monday night at Volunteer Park and tell me how many people were there and how many people came from where. So, I mean, it's, it's really cool. That's why, the one question I had, and I've, I've scoured the contract, and you probably know what I'm going to ask, but how many licenses are we getting? And, because it just sees, it just says authorized users. It doesn't say how many.
I think we limit it to town employees.
I've got a badge. I'm a town employee.
The determination of authorized users is sitting right over there. We, and there's other, there's, there's just about every department. It's like Mr. Rose is putting the device on the front of the trucks to manage the roads and see what the condition of the roads is. Well, we have a big development coming in over on Lee Victory, Kroger. So we can tell you how many trips are in and out of Kroger with a similar development. That may speed up his need to fix roads, or it may, may provide us with some data for infrastructure. And I'll get off my subbox, but the, the biggest one that, in, in retrospect that we did for the, the airshow, is had we looked, or had this capabilities at that time, we could have looked and seen what the ingress and egress was going to be for the airshow. And if we all know on that Thursday before the airshow, we had a, a, a logjam of vehicles on Lowry. What we can see where all this, all the people are traveling to and from, and turn around and go back to our traffic operations center, and it helps us map out where people are. If you have a large amount of people coming in, Sam Ridley, we can route those people around based off the traffic and, and historical data is what we're talking about, so.
So it could help assist the ITS system?
Yeah, it can. I have yet to find a department that we can't associate this and do some data-driven statistics for.
So, so I've got a question. So you can track, you know, I guess, a new retail development. You can kind of estimate, you know, what the economic impacts want to be based on, I guess, other similar types?
Yes, sir.
But does it track the business that is being taken away from?
Yes.
Down the road?
Absolutely. It's a new term that I had never heard of in my life in the marketing area. It's called cannibalism.
Cannibalism.
And so you have businesses, and there's a, there's a case study that they sent us especially. And I can tell you what we did on a demo, was we went to Publix on Lee Victory, and we drew a bubble around Lee Victory, and we'd see what kind of traffic is coming in at Lee Victory. And say that we go into ICSC, there's somebody that we would like to market to for that area, or town property or something. What it will do is it will draw that bubble, and it will go out and find out what's non-cannibalizing, which means they're not going to consume similar.
Yeah, compare.
And it was very interesting. It's the one at Lee Victory, based off of demographics of how far people travel for barbecue, one of the places that they recommended was a barbecue-type restaurant on Sam Ridley, or, excuse me, Lee Victory at Publix. If you think about it, there's not a barbecue restaurant around there. And so places that are misnumbers are like McDonald's and Chick-fil-A, because traditionally McDonald's and Chick-fil-A does not cannibal, cannibalize each other. So when we're looking at the data, we can see that, you know, let's, at ICSC, or there's people that come into town, we can actually check and see if these type of facilities are cannibalizing other facilities.
Right.
And, and it's a, again, it's a very robust little platform.
Are we going to have a workshop on that?
Well, I'm kind of going the same way as though. It sounds like that it's going to take somebody really knowing what the system can do, and I understand you do, but what happens if something happens to Todd tomorrow? So how many people are we going to be training to make sure that we understand?
We have, we have an answer to that for you as well. So...
In case somebody cannibalizes.
That's right. That's right.
So it, you have to remember, we're, I'm a little excited about this because of the collaboration of all the different departments, as you can tell. The collaboration of all the departments. We'll have representatives from Parks. We'll obviously have Ms. Kent. We'll have police. We'll have the analysts from the Police Department. Even throwing in a programmer from our IT department that we can maybe correspond data. One thing about this is we can also supply them data. So we can supply them data if there is a metrics that we wish to design. And so I think our initial group right now is already seven people in the town.
It's pretty easy. I, I played with it at ICSC. It's a web interface. It's a SaaS product, and it's really very easy to point and click. And I, I was able to pull up one of my adult softball tournaments and see the numbers, and then compared it to, I think we looked at the airshow when we were there.
You've already had a workshop.
Yeah. No, it was just literally in a booth.
It was a play shop.
It was, it was very easy.
I'm serious about the council getting up to speed on it, just to understand it.
Yeah. It would be a perfect opportunity, especially for the joint meeting that we have with planning.
Yeah.
Just to kind of give you, give you, not a demo, but give you a test run, because the, like Councilman Sullivan said, the product is so easy to use. In that meeting, if you go, hey, let's check this, this, and this, just click, click, and click.
Right.
Obviously, once we get more familiar with it.
Yeah, the hardest thing I had was figuring out the dates, right? I was like, I want to see airshow last year, and I'm like, crap, what was the date, you know? And so that was the hardest thing, was figuring out what I wanted to look at.
And you have historical data as well. So, again, we can, it's a four-day, and I have a little angst when you said track. Really, we don't, we, the product doesn't track anything. It's four-day old data, really, is what it is. And, and so, as long as the data is four days, it goes back to, I believe, about 2018. Interesting fact, obviously, you haven't said anything about the tie.
I was ignoring it.
He, he, our, the person that was giving us a demo did one for University of Tennessee at the stadium for a ballgame. And it was a, a ballgame against, I think it was Troy. And you'd be surprised at how many residents from Rutherford County traveled to that game via I-40. And that's how detailed of an information. And so again, back to marketing, if we have these events, and we used Halloween in the Park, shockingly, everybody goes to Walmart before and after when they go to Halloween at the park. How about us notifying that vendor or that business and say, hey, we have data-driven information. You guys could be a good sponsor for this event, because we can show that out of all these thousands of people, we have a percentage that stops at your business. And so that, we can, I don't want to say we get into marketing business, but we can use our time wisely and look at targeted audiences.
Perfect. Thanks. Exciting stuff. Item 13 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with National Sign Clauses Incorporated for the installation and maintenance of the directional sign program. Amber sent us some follow-up info, I guess. Couple days. Couple days ago. So, questions or comments on this?
I saw that they adjusted it down to three-year term, which is one thing I asked for, which I appreciate. You know, I'm going to be honest, I'm a little skeptical that it's going to be as great as it sounds. I think there'll still be some vendors that'll still stick their signs out right next to our sign, and we'll have to police that, or they'll stick them out in personal or private property. But because there's no cost to the town, and it doesn't really cost us anything to try it, and there's no real, there's not really a downside other than the fact that we're going to have to police it, but we have to police it already, so.
Well, we'll have some additional codes enforcer, enforcement, employee coming, opposition coming.
I hope it works the way they say it will. I'm not so sure it will.
But for three years.
Within that email I sent to you all, I hope that I addressed all of the questions and concerns that came up during the meeting. But additionally, I was able to get two references by the time I sent that email. I've got a couple more that I might get, so if I do get those, I'll be sure to send them your way.
Dave and I had a conversation yesterday or the day before, and I looked this weekend as I was out riding around, and most of the developer signs were out of the right of way on private property, so I'm not sure that, obviously, we can't pick those up, so...
Yeah, that's what I noticed. I was like, one of the, one of the hotspots is Burnt Knob and Amble Road. On the weekends, there's forty out there, and...
There's always signs there.
It's private property. Sean Collins Properties owns it, and so, I mean, I'm not sure there's anything we can do about it anyway. But, but they do seem to mostly pick them up and put them back, so they're doing what they're supposed to.
Okay. Item 14 is consideration of a resolution relative to a plan of services for properties located on Tax Map 20, Parshall 45.00, 61.01, 61.02, and 61.03, and Tax Map 26, Parshall 13.00, 13, 13.01, 13.02, 15.00, 15.01, and 18.01, which, that's the plan of services, which goes along with item 15.
That's correct.
Which is consideration of an ordinance relative to annexation in C2 and I1 zoning of property on Tax Map 20, Parshall 61.01 and 61.03, and Tax Map 26, Parshall 13.00, 13.01, 13.02, 15.00, 15.01, and 18.01 requested by Hamilton Development LLC. On behalf of Hollingshead Land LLC containing 178.6 acres, the properties are located south of West Jefferson Pike, State Route 266, and that is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor Council, the plan of services has not changed, so there's nothing new there. This is, puts in, bringing services the town would be providing upon approval of annexation, again, which would be all services in this regard. The annexation, again, it is, let's defer back to planning commission. It is on their agenda for next week for the revised zoning of about, probably thirty acres on C2 and the rest zoned I1. And so this would be coming back to you all with that revised vote on that revision. We did have the, the, to best, make sure, I think it is the revised plan there, and then...
Looks better.
We get to it, I guess, just thought it was in order. Yeah. This is the revised map. The green area is the C2 zoned area, and the blue being the I1 zoned area.
So, nothing really new for us, other, I mean, so it's more of a placeholder once it goes through planning commission and then comes back to us for second reading?
Yeah, essentially, the change they made is what we asked them to make, right? We asked for more commercial, and that's what they did.
I have a question that kind of pertains to this area, but not really this particular parcel, but real quick. Tom, I'm going to put you on the spot, because I had somebody ask me about the intersection there at A-40 and the left turn lane going towards Lebanon coming from Smyrna. Are we still controlling that signal? Do we have any say in that signal at all anymore?
So that is in the counties, in Rutherford County, and we do maintain that for them, just making sure that the cabinet say it's clean, and that's basically what we...
That light turns red, and I, I've sent Dave a couple of pictures, and there's been times that I'm heading out to 40, and I'm sitting at that red light waiting to turn left. There's no cars coming for minutes.
Yes.
And I can't turn because it's red. And so that's the question is, I, I think you're going at, is can that become a caution? Flies in yellow.
Yeah, in peak hours, it's, and, you know, it's a state road. I get it. But in peak hours, that left stacking lane is backing up.
I've heard that as well.
SRM signal.
Yeah, because they can't go, even though there may not be any cars coming.
Yeah.
Jonathan has gone out there several times and re-timed it and kind of helped it a little bit, but, and I drive that way in and out almost every day.
Do you have a clicker that gets you through the line?
Yes, I do, and you're not going to get it. But, no, I wish I did. I, I, I know what your struggle, the struggle is, and I've seen it, like, every morning I'll see it backed up all the way from one going to Lebanon, almost all the way back to the other side, and then in the afternoon, coming home, it seems like it's like a flip.
Sort of like under Alamo Bill, under the overpass.
Yeah, yeah.
They're overhyped.
But like I said, it's still under T-DOT, or I guess just say, it's still under the contractor for T-DOT for the project. Once they're done and they turn it over, I'm going to, I'm probably going to go ahead of time and talk to the county and see how they feel about making it a permissive left, so having that yellow so that you can turn left if no one's coming through. I know it's a, it's higher traffic, and it can be a concern, you know, by allowing people to have a permissive left, then it could cause an accident. But at the same time, if someone is frustrated and waiting and they can't go and they turn left, that could cause an accident as well. So those are discussions that I'm definitely going to have with the county to see how they feel about making that change.
The other question, just while I got you, is the same person that asked me this. And I know this is out of our, our realm of what we have the ability to do, but when you have a 45, then a 40, and then a 30, people are blowing through the 40 and the 30. Is there any way that the T-DOT can look at some consistency, whether it's 40 or 45? Jerry lives at the 40, I think.
I live at the 40.
You live at the 40. But when you cross the bridge, it's 45.
Right.
And when you go down the other way, it's 35. So, or 30, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So I know most of it coming in from like 96, like 96 coming in. It's 40, 45, 40 miles an hour from like last Cassis. It's 40 miles an hour coming in. It does change temporarily to 45, so I think they kept it in that 40, 45 mile an hour range. It does drop significantly when you get down to 30 miles an hour, and I think the reason why they did that is part because of the park.
Yeah.
Old Jefferson Pike, a lot of residential intersections coming out, and I think there's another intersecting street. And then, of course, as you get closer to commercial, it did, used to be a higher speed coming through there, coming up. That's something that I know I've talked several times with Andy Miller and John Elston about, and something that we can certainly entertain, is once it is transferred over to us, do we want to look to change that speed?
There needs to be some look at it, I think. It's a...
Living on there, I don't want to see it any higher, to be honest with you.
Well, I'm not saying it needs to be higher, but some consistency.
The issue, the, the thing that, that we've got there is, once you're coming into town and it goes from 45 to 40, there's a sign right there past Ernie Johns's house that starts down the hill that actually says 30, okay? Now, the car will not, the car still shows 40.
Yeah.
But if you're coming up from the other direction, it's 40. So going down, there's a sign saying it's 30 going down.
Right.
Coming into town, but coming back out of town, it's, there's a sign that says it's 40.
Okay. Literally across the street from each other.
Yeah.
So they're like...
I'll look at that. I, I know we brought that up to them a few times. I thought they had corrected it, but I don't know if you know they corrected it or not, but we'll look at that.
If you look at it on your car, it's 40. Every, you know, it shows that it's 40, but there's a sign there that says that it's 30 if you go down that hill.
Okay.
And, and probably 60 or 70% of the people aren't minding it anyway. I mean, you know, they're...
No.
They're, 30 is feel slow on a five lane, and so they're just, you know, they're just flying.
It does feel...
Councilman Short, when you say on your car it shows a difference, you're talking about like the...
On the car, it shows that 40 going down and coming out.
GPS navigation showing it's different?
Yeah.
You mean the GPS navigation showing a difference?
That's right.
Yeah, that may not be, maybe just Googled and updated. I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom. Sorry to ask a question that did pertain to this, but sorry.
Item 16 is our housekeeping, which is consideration of a resolution memorandum of ordinance 25-21 relative to the annexation C2 and I1 zoning of property requested by Hamilton Development LLC on behalf of Hollingshead Land LLC containing 178.6 acres. Item 17 is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the existing PRD of properties located on Tax Map 54, Parshall 57.02, and Tax Map 73, Parshall 13.00, 13.01, 13.03, 13.04, and 16.00. We're owned by South Coast DFH Nashville LLC containing 67.68 acres and is, and the rezoning of Tax Map 54, part of Parcel 57.00, owned by Sean S. Collins Two Properties LLC from R3 to PRD containing 31 hundredths of an acre. The request is from Gamble Designs Collaborative on behalf of the property owners and is located along Rocky IV Gamble Road and Browley Road, and this is a second reading.
Yes, Mayor Council, this is a, a second reading. Nothing has changed since you looked at it on first reading. These are, all these properties are located south and east of Browley Road and west of Rocky IV Gamble Road. This existing PRD for Browley Downs was approved in April of 2023. It's for 212 single-family lots on 67.68 acres for about 3.13 units per acre. When you take out the provided open space, at 212 lots, the density is about 4.06 units per acre. The request of PRD and PRD amendment would add 31 hundredths of an acre that's currently zoned R3 from an adjacent tract. And so after that is added, the requested PRD would be for 217 single-family lots on 67.99 acres, which is about 3.19 units per acre. on sixty-seven point nine nine acres, which is about three point one nine units per acre. Again, when you discount or take out that provided open space, it's about four point one three units per acre, so it is an increase with the increased five lots, it is, even with the increased property, it is increasing density slightly there. In addition, the amenities proposed have been changed to add a pool and clubhouse, replacing a pavilion, dog park, and community garden. And it has also been requested to amend the front setback from thirty-five feet to twenty feet, with a thirty-five foot setback still required to any front entry garage. The overall layout, the minimum and maximum house size, and all those things did not change from what was approved originally from April of two thousand and twenty-three. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request.
Questions on this?
Yeah, my question is, what, what's the reasoning of the changing the front setback? You know, from when it was initially, I guess, brought in, you know, for approval to now?
Yeah, well, we required thirty-five foot front setback to provide, get in with a double width driveway to have four, room for four parking spaces on the drive, within the driveway. That's, since that time, we've had several PRDs come through with that lesser front setback as far as to the front wall of the house, but recessing the garage till at thirty-five feet.
So they're, they're just basically following someone else's lead that's had it approved after them?
Yeah, there've been several that have come in after that. It, in my opinion, this is kind of my opinion, it kind of makes the house, it looks a little better, I think, to recess the garage. You don't have the garage dominating the front of the side of the house. It does kind of recess, it still provides that four parking spaces, allows for a little bit more flexibility for the house to be a little, little bit bigger backyard, hopefully, that sort of thing too as well. So, so that's, that's where, where the request came from, from the developer at least.
Okay, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to item eighteen, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of tax map eighteen, part of parcel ten point oh one, to go from C two to PUD, and for the amendment of the existing PUD on tax map eighteen, part of parcel ten point oh one, as well as parcels ten point oh two, ten point oh three, ten point oh four, and ten point oh five, and tax map twenty-eight, parcels forty-four point twenty-nine, forty-four point thirty, and forty-four point thirty-one, owned and requested by Seawards Landing LP. The property requested to be rezoned from C two to PUD contains approximately three acres, and the parcels requested to have the PUD amendment contain approximately thirty-seven point ninety-four acres for a total of forty point ninety-four acres. The properties are located on Sam Ridley Parkway West and Motlow College Boulevard, and this is a second reading.
Yes, Mayor and Council, again, nothing has changed on this since you all looked at it on first reading. This is a rezoning, rezoning request as well as a PUD amendment request. Existing approved PUD would allow for two hundred and eighty thousand four hundred square feet of commercial buildings, two hundred and forty-five thousand five hundred square feet of office, two hundred and forty hotel rooms, and seventy-five four-cell condominiums. This amendment would, would add three acres that are in the extreme northwest corner of the parcel, which was excluded originally, with the note that the use would be coordinated with the town and Motlow State Community College. This portion of the parcel is still zoned C two, but has been requested to be incorporated into the PUD with this amendment. In addition, the PUD amendment would include the removal of the four-cell, seventy, seventy-five four-cell condominiums and replace them with two hundred and sixty-eight full rent apartments. The requirement, they did request the requirement of a minimum of seventy-five percent brickstone and glass be reduced. The recommendation from Planning Commission would, would not do that for the commercial buildings or the non-residential buildings. The list of primary materials did get amended to add some additional primary materials as well and some secondary materials. The overall road layout did not change, but the location, orientation, and uses of some of the buildings would change. The Planning Commission did recommend approval with, again, three conditions, to provide details for the proposed recreational amenities for the plazas and parks are shown, to provide a signage plan as required by the sign ordinance, and that, as I stated just a minute ago, the, the non-residential buildings are required to meet the requirements of designer view, including a minimum of seventy-five percent brickstone and glass for any elevation visible from a public street. The residential and mixed-use buildings are required to meet the requirements of designer view for residential buildings, with the exception that the first floor of any mixed-use building is required to meet the requirements for non-residential buildings. Again, the Planning Commission did review this and did recommend approval.
So after our last meeting and talking about the three acres, I kind of went back and did a little bit of homework in trying to find out the history of that, and in June of twenty-three, I talked to President of Motlow, Dr. Michael Torrance, and he said in June of twenty-three, they had met with former, our former town manager and that they had had initial discussions about that property in case a fourth building was gonna be built, but it was just initial conversations and that they had not had any further discussion on that, and he said that he did not feel the town had committed to donating the property in, in any way. So I just wanted to make sure that there was, there was nothing that Motlow was feeling like the town was gonna be committing to.
They're not gonna build a fourth building anymore?
He did not say, he did not say that they still would like to build a fourth building, but he did not feel that we had committed to providing those three acres. And that, after the conversation that we had had at the last meeting, I just wanted to hear what, how Motlow was feeling. Other questions or comments?
I guess so that we're clear, I mean, the three acre was included in what we sold to Lance Loso, or Land Elliott, or whatever name, what are they called, Seawards Group, or whatever it's called.
So the three acres was included in the sale?
Yes.
Why was it not brought in as part of the whole development initially?
I think it was, and I think it just got, from my understanding, it just.
It got tweaked.
It got, didn't it?
I mean, it was not included as part of the original rezoning request. It was kept out, and I, my assumption is that was when that discussion was going on, and I think probably was left out in case.
That was, from what I understand, Land, the developer, he was also in some meetings with.
It was that June meeting, it was that, Land was in there as well, and they said that they had initially talked about possibly having some easements for going to parking for Motlow as well as getting to the back of the development.
Are they still gonna have that access through Seawards Landing even without the three acres?
I don't, I don't think this concept plan shows that. I mean, this, in this area here, like, you know, we're here.
The biggest thing, I, I just don't want us, if we've made a commitment to Motlow in the past for three acres, that now we've sold it and now we're gonna rezon it.
And I was exactly the same place, I did not want them, so having the conversation with Dr. Torrance and.
You spoke with the president?
I spoke to Dr. Torrance, so, and, and Dave and I even had some conversation today about it, so. But yes, Dr. Torrance was very clear that they did not feel that we had committed to donating that property, because we've got a great working relationship with them, and I want to make sure that we keep that.
And I guess what triggered all this was the note on the plat that said the town of Smyrna and Motlow to be coordinated between town of Smyrna and Motlow, and that's really what triggered my curiosity.
Absolutely, well, and, so Jeff, if, if this moves forward and we make a motion for that, does any of that language that's on the plat need to be taken off where it says that, or does that matter?
If I can jump into that, it's not on the plat, it was just on the zoning PUD. It was never been shown on any subdivision plat we've received.
It's not.
Yeah, it's not, there's no.
So if it, would it make it cleaner if, when we go to amend it? That we amend it without it, or does it matter?
I mean, the amendment doesn't, doesn't have it now. I mean, this, this is, what's on the screen now is the PUD as recommended by Planning Commission.
Okay.
And they're showing buildings in that area.
Yeah, it was just, I think it, it was this map here, whatever, that was part of the.
Right, the original packet, right.
Yeah.
Mayor, if I may, the one thing that, in, in learning about all of this, and obviously not being here when any of this occurred, and trying to piece this together, the one thing that does seem, I do want to just get clarity on for the council, is this access easement. Because I did have some conversations with Land today, and he mentioned it as, as well, and there seemed to be a willingness, if necessary, and so I just want to make sure that, is there, is there, does Motlow have an expectation of that? And does the developer have the willingness to do it? And so from here, obviously just being workshop, I'd like to get some of that information and, and see if I can get some clarity to that.
In the discussion with Dr. Torrance, it was discussed, but they did not feel it was committed now. With that said, it, it may be that they would still like the possibility of that, and if the developer was willing to do that, maybe we can, maybe we can do that, and maybe that's something that we could have some discussion between now and.
The voting, the.
Yep.
So I think my understanding is, is those buildings, I think that's, I can't read it, but eighteen, nineteen, twenty?
I think that's right, yeah, those are.
Those are really like kind of placeholders for, for future.
Phase three, too.
Right, so there may be.
They're a longer term phase, for sure, yeah.
So there may be opportunity there.
Yeah.
I, I pulled this up on the county's tax maps today, and one thing I found really interesting, maybe you can clarify it, but the corner track of Sam Ridley and Motlow actually says Motlow Partners.
It does.
Now.
It's out of Nashville, I looked at that too.
Okay.
I looked at that too.
So it's not actually state of Tennessee Motlow property?
But Motlow itself, right, Motlow itself is state of Tennessee, because I looked, I looked at that same thing that you did.
And then the Y is listed under the town's property, I guess, on a long term lease.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, one more comment on this development. Everybody knows my position, I'm kind of opposed to putting two hundred and sixty-eight apartments in and taking away seventy-five four-cell condos, especially based on, we started out with a hundred thousand square foot anchor tenant, and now we're down to a twenty-three thousand square foot, I guess, anchor tenant, if you want to call it.
But we added that other building.
We added two buildings.
You added some more retail.
But it's two buildings, so it's not as if it's gone from a hundred to twenty.
Okay, if I could finish.
Follow me.
The, the, the argument was at that time that we needed that, that much, many more rooftops, apartments, to make the financial model work for this development. You know, we, we sold on the property, I feel like, at a very good cost. They're getting a twenty-year, you know, tax incentives on this, and now they're coming back and wanting to switch the condos to two hundred and sixty-eight apartments. And we even did a count from Blair to Lowry Street, which was already either approved or built, I think, four thousand three eighty-six, and then citywide, we have, what, eighty-six hundred apartments? And I guess at what point, you know, are we, you know, we, we keep saying, I'm glad R six is almost gone, the zoning. At what time, you know, when, when is enough enough, I guess?
Other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll put that on the agenda and we'll move to item nineteen, which is consideration of an appointment of one planning commission representative to serve on the historic zoning commission. We had a resignation from the planning commission representatives, so we will have to put a planning commission representative back on historic zoning, so we will do that at the next meeting. Anything under other?
Who, who was the, the one that resigned?
Miranda.
Is she the business of Hazelwood or?
Miranda Swill.
Okay.
She was on planning and then stepped off of planning, but was able to continue on to these eight, the end of that term.
She's actually staying, yeah, she's staying on historic, she's just not planning member anymore, so.
No, she's not staying on historic, she's coming off.
Oh, is she?
Yeah, she's coming, no, she's coming off historic, she's coming off historic, and she was the planning commission rep for historic, no, she's, she's leaving.
Okay.
Hey, how are you?
Hi, I'm good. I am reporting on a emergency purchase of a guard rail. The vendor, RNC Construction Company, has estimated a final cost of ten thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. The damage and missing guard rail is a safety issue to the motoring public. There was a hit and run incident on Blair Road near Rock Springs. The bridge maintenance funds will cover this.
Okay, thanks. Kevin, anything? Chief, anything? Casey? Charles? Would you come up one, for one thing real quick? And this may be, this may be you, I don't, I'm, I'm gonna ask you, but it may be turned over to Tom.
I've got a question for one of them, too.
For Front Street, can we talk a little bit about where we are with that project?
Right, Utilities has completed their work, they're finishing up. I have put in to schedule CSX Flagger for September the twenty-ninth through October the tenth, for that two-week period to give us some flexibility, but I have put that in for that, and that's when the contractor will have their milling and paving contracts ready.
Okay, so end of September, we're waiting another month?
Yeah, like I said, we had, just had to make sure that they were out, and then the time I got back my contractor, their milling crew was already booked up till September the twenty-ninth. So that's, put us a little bit behind there, but it also gives me time to get the CSX Flagger scheduled.
Okay.
It's two days after Depot Days.
I know, I wish I could, I was trying to come in earlier, but when my contractor got back with him, they had already scheduled that, their milling and paving crew for that, that week.
Okay, other, was that your question too?
No, speaking of guard rails, that's what triggered my thought. Someone told me there's a guard rail, and I actually went by and looked at it in front of Target on Industrial Boulevard. Where the retaining wall is, the retaining wall is falling in, and the guard rail.
Right, right, that is under design with a consultant now, because it's more than just guard rail. It's the retaining wall.
Right.
And they've had to go back in, they should have plans sent to me, maybe about tomorrow or next week somehow, but we've been working on that for over nine months, trying to come back with a fix without having to try to anchor that guard rail back in under the road, so.
Okay.
We'll come back with the plans here, hopefully by next week, we'll start getting that ready to go. That has, it is deteriorating further from what it originally hit.
That was a hit and run also.
Right, it was a semi, you could tell it was a semi that rolled that guard rail all the way down through there last February during a snowstorm, but like I said, that was also a hit and run.
Perfect, thank you, sir. Kristy, anything? Sierra? Mike? Charles? Me, listen to me calling you Charles, sorry, Tom? Jeff? Mike? Chief? We'll skip you. Todd? Amber Lou?
Yeah, just a couple cases. I have some numbers for you guys, just some updates. I looked just a minute ago for the no solicitation list, we've had two thousand forty-seven addresses since you guys approved it at the September meeting that have registered for that. And then also, I just wanted to give Mr. Santucci and you guys some thanks. We have been working in our next request, open records management software, and it is working really, really well. Sometimes I have to remind myself to log into it, it's so efficient. And we have processed a hundred and thirty-three requests to date, and we launched that on July eighteenth, so it hasn't even been six weeks yet, we've already processed a hundred and thirty-three requests through that. Also, I just wanted to let you guys know, I'm working with our fantastic IT department to make sure that our new. you guys know, I'm working with our fantastic IT department to make sure that our new agenda management software is front-facing by the September regular meeting on the night. So that will be where, I know you guys have kind of been on the back end, but it will be front-facing, and the packet materials will be accessible to the public for that meeting. So that's all I got, just a few little updates.
Perfect. Thanks. Dave?
Yep. Got a couple of slides, but before I do, I do want to recognize our staff and some of the departments that participated in our summer internship program. So thank you very much to Finance, Public Works, particularly Stormwater, Parks, IT, Administration, and our office, Police Department, and HR for putting together an internship program for both paid and unpaid interns over the summer. We have one gentleman who was working with our wellness team. His name was Patrick Richardson. And just going to read one of his comments, so you can see the impact that this had, at least on him. "I just wanted to take some time to message and express my thankfulness to the Echo Wellness Internship. I feel that my time that I spent with Smyrna this summer was very beneficial for me. The ability to take academic and textbook ideas and apply them to real-life goals is a really great experience and has made me excited to work in public health. Working with JJ and Lisa was the perfect environment to teach me these skills, support me in foster growth. JJ was an absolute wealth of knowledge and insight about working in wellness and health. I'm grateful for his wisdom and unyielding positive outlook. Lisa was fantastic at planning my internship. She was able to see the big picture and manage me through each week to meet the goals we set. I'm grateful for her leadership skills and ability to teach and foster communication." So thank you all for participating in our internship program. I hope you got a lot out of it, and I'm glad that we do it. Got a couple of slides. First one is the Rutherford County Regional Forensic Center groundbreaking that we had the pleasure of participating in just yesterday, I believe. We had, obviously, the town council there, and a lot of great leaders from around the county were there to, to really talk about the impact that this will have. We're blessed to have this within the town. It's a $15 million investment by the Rutherford County Commission, and this new facility will be located on a 10-acre site near Weekly Lane in Smyrna. In addition to the forensic center, the site has future plans for an EMS station, potential county clerk's office, and office, office buildings. So really excited to see that groundbreaking. And they're projected to open in Q1 of 2027. And since they'll be working with the Town of Smyrna, I'm sure they'll meet that deadline. Next one is about our police academy. Just to let everyone know, that the Smyrna Police Department is hosting its Citizens Police Academy from September 16th through November 11th. It's held on Tuesday nights from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. The program is open to adults 18 years and older, and will cover the topics such as traffic stops, investigations, patrol, narcotics, and tours. Applications are due by September 8th. And for more information or to apply, you can go to the town's website at www.townofsmyrna.org. That's all I have.
Great. Jeff? Jerome?
Have a slide, I think. Yes. So we're having the Smyrna Rotary Clubs having the 23rd Annual Wings of Freedom Fish Fry. This year's event honors the heroic legacy of the Tuskegee Airmen, the first African-American military aviators in the U.S. Armed Forces. Enjoy great food, community fellowship, and a celebration of freedom and history. And that's on Saturday, September the 13th. And you can visit wofsmyrna.com. And Steve, just so you'll know, the Chip Foose 69 Camaro had to cancel.
Was held in Franklin over a three-day period. And so it was good to be able to interact with other local council people, elected, other elected officials, and just kind of see what they were doing in their particular towns and in their counties. And there was actually a, a town hall with the city mayor of Franklin, as well as the county mayor, and a town manager from Hendersonville to talk about being able to create partnerships among the different counties and municipalities. So it was good to hear some of the things that they've done and have been able to work effectively through to get product, projects done.
Ken Loer and Roger Anderson are great. They are really good.
And also, another slide, I wanted to thank Ms. Jennifer Britton and her criminal justice class at Smyrna High School for having me come talk to the students about my public service work with the council, as well as my legal background on this past Tuesday, August 26. And it was a rather small class, but they were all seniors, and they asked a lot of great questions. So it was a pleasure to spend the morning with them and just talk about some of the things that go into choosing your career and developing leadership and being able to, to go through the program.
Slide. You do. Did I? Huh?
Would you like to have it?
No. I'm just going to say, love where you live. Pick up your trash. Tell us, keep Smyrna litter-free. I'd like to add, recycle also. Recycle, reuse. And then Todd, Mika. That's all I have.
Karen?
Okay, I've got a slide as well. Coming up real soon, Friday, September the 12th at 7:30. And you can come earlier than that and enjoy the festivities and all. Will be the sixth anniversary of the Top Gun Run. That's one of my favorite events. I don't think you'll be disappointed, so.
We're at 578.
Oh, you better hurry up. Better hurry up. But that's all I've got. Have a happy Labor Day.
Steve?
Right. I also have a slide. There are 13th Annual Town of Smur, Familiar Faces there on the screen. I think Mayor Esterstein came in last.
We did not.
We came in last after the gig.
Yeah, that's right.
I think we placed somewhere in there. We never got our award. You guys look sharp.
Also, I mentioned last time that we were on baby watch. We now, now have a new grandson. He was born Friday morning at 6:30, seven pounds, nine ounces, 19 and a half inches long. Him and my daughter Stephanie are doing great.
Our show. And then on Saturday, Depot Days will be going on all day long, pretty much, from 10:00 to 4:00 PM. All this is taking place over on Front Street. Kick things off at the Classic Car Show. And then on Saturday, Depot Days is act of kindness and what he did, chief. We appreciate all your officers out there doing that kind of work and thank him for that. I'm not going to be in town when Smyrna High School does their Hall of Fame, but I spoke with Richard Thomas. Richard's been so... But my youngest turned 38. So happy birthday to my son, Adam. That's all I have.
Two items tonight. Congratulations to Bean Brothers Barbecue and Catering, which opened on... And Mark, we're able to attend the groundbreaking ceremony for Rutherford County Baptist Church on Sunday. It was a wonderful event, and we appreciate them having us out. Two personal items tonight. First of all, Mary Lee in Austin.
Officially going to be a houseboy.
That's right. That's right. He's always been that. So, anything else?
Ooh, I hope he's not watching.
No, he would say that.